...for December tenth, two thousand and twelve. I would ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Thank you. Ms. Seymour. Here. Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Lance. Here. Mr. Frasier.
Here.
Mr. Fricke.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Sider.
Here.
You have seven members present.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible). In this great public, for which we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask that you have a cell phone, that you turn it off or put it on vibration. We're going to begin tonight's agenda with four presentations, and I'm extremely pleased to present our council and mayor's resolution for Michigan's Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Dr. Cook Robinson, would you come to the podium and join me, please? This is really a very special occasion for me, because I've worked with Wanda for many, many years. We always said we were joined at the head. She was a great team member and partner. We collaborated on many, many things. So I'm extremely pleased to be the person tonight to present this resolution, a joint resolution from the mayor and council, to Southfield Public Schools' State Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Whereas, Southfield Public Schools' Superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, was recently selected as the 2013 State Superintendent of the Year by the Michigan Association School Board, and whereas, this prestigious award recognizes one outstanding superintendent from among more than one thousand throughout the state of Michigan annually, and whereas, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has been instrumental in advancing Southfield Public Schools as a role model for districts throughout the nation through her visionary leadership, energetic advocacy, and exemplary commitment to students, faculty, and the school district. And whereas, Dr. Cook Robinson has spearheaded numerous district achievements, including district-wide accreditation by Advanced Ed, which is part of North Central, or affiliated with North Central School and Colleges, increasing student achievement, and a district-wide focus on differentiated construction, increasing graduation rates and scholarships earned district-wide, earning Bridge Magazine State Champions status for the district's high graduation rating, maintaining a balanced budget by reducing district operating expenses by ninety million dollars in the past six years, and developing a partnership with the National Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development to implement district-wide professional development, and the district now serves as the model for the ASCD. Often I mention here is the College Board, correct, of partnership with them. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson on being elected as the 2013 State Superintendent of the Year. We have further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, convey our co-elected commendations for being a role model for all Southfield Public Schools' students, faculty, and parents, and for achieving excellence in public education and professional development. Signed by the council and the mayor on this day of the tenth of December, two thousand and twelve.
I'd like to thank the council for recognizing me this evening, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention a board of education that is the dream team that supports me, a cabinet that is always there to help me, administrators and teachers who come and give a hundred and ten percent every day. My husband will take the picture. And city council and partners, you know, we have been putting partnerships together for the last two years, and it makes a difference. It helps stretch that dollar. And also our mayor, who is always looking for resources to bring to our district and roll up her sleeves and come and help us. So I want to thank all of you for being part of our village and helping to make Southfield a great school district. Thank you.
And I have my board members, Stan, there with me this evening, our board president, Darryl Buchanan, our board vice president, Karen Katz, board trustee, Betty Robinson, and board trustee, Rand Swatey, and also my cabinet and staff, Anna, because they helped me get this award. Thanks for that.
Council President.
Yes, Mr. Stone.
I'd like to say this, and I do a lot of volunteer work with the Southfield Public Schools, and quite often in my volunteer activities, I have a pleasant occasion to work side by side with Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. And in this economic times that we're in, the hard economic times that we're in, and the cutting that she has to do in order to keep the school afloat and still turn out top-notch students is almost a miracle. And working side by side with her, I have yet to see a day when she's down. Even though the decisions are tough, she is always upbeat, and that's a sign of an excellent leader, that can take the heat and still be positive about the future and turn out great students. And I have a couple of examples that I won't bore you with, that are great students that came through the Southfield Public Schools under her command. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Fricke.
Yeah. I'd just like to congratulate you very much. I have a son-in-law at Southfield High School, and a daughter that works for the school district, and they bring home nothing but a great, great to schools again, and I can see the great change in the manner where they run, and the manner where she did what she did, and the way she knew it, the staff, and everyone, the jobs she's doing.
Mr. President, if any, I remember when Wanda Cook Robinson joined Southfield Schools quickly. I remember she came from accounting, and she held a very prescient position, and I met her very early on when we were doing conferences at the school, when we had company, and she was very supportive of Southfield Classical Music and program, and when we were students studying classical piano. I remember the discussions we had. I was so excited then to have her join the school system and just be a part of our community. And she, as everyone says, she has this upbeat personality, can-do attitude, we all admire her, and go to left and right for her. It's so nice to see you get this award, which is a great thing for the city, but you deserve this honor and I'm happy to see you have come to this conference.
Councilwoman Jordan.
I should certainly must weigh in and echo the comments of my colleagues and other women on a fine job that people continue to do. And I think like you, Frasier, said it well, that your leadership is valid, leadership is key, that being a visionary has brought you to this day, so we commend you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call City Clerk, Nancy Banks, to the podium, and Deputy City Clerk, Sue Silva. (inaudible) sorry about the standing there. Well, this is a special night for Sue Silva, who has been with the city how many years?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years. She recently earned a great honor, and we're very pleased to share that with everybody. So, Ms. Banks, if you would.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Sharet, two words, commitment, dedication, and experience, a three-word that describes Sue Silva's twenty-six years of service with the city of Southfield. Sue began working with the city of Southfield in nineteen eighty-six in the human, excuse me, Resourceless Department. In nineteen eighty-seven, she was selected for the assignment in the Public Safety Department and worked there until March of nineteen ninety-four, when she was then promoted to Administrator Assistant to the Mayor. When Deputy City Clerk Susan Rydell retired in two thousand and two, Sue Silva applied for this position and was appointed Deputy City Clerk. In two thousand and four, Ms. Silva became certified as a municipal clerk by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Two thousand and twelve was a very busy year in the city clerk's office, starting with the closed primary election in February, and the voters getting to the election have declared their party progress. The mayor went on to the primary election in August, where the famous citizenship question appeared, and all forty-three creasings were finally using the e-poll box, and lots of training had occurred up to the afternoon, to a record voter turnout for voters in the presidential election in November. In lieu of the many things that we did in the city clerk's office this year, Ms. Silva had still found time and was elected and led the Oakland County Clerks Association as their president this two thousand and twelve year. The International Institute of Municipal Clerk grants the Master Municipal Clerk designation only to those municipal clerks who have completed demanding educational requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, community, and also to the state of Michigan. There are presently only sixty-five Master Municipal Clerks out of approximately twelve hundred in the state of Michigan, and out of those sixty-five, there are only three deputy clerks. It takes a large commitment to obtain this status, and in November, right before the election, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks recognized Miss Silva for earning this esteemed title of Master Municipal Clerk. Miss Silva is a definite asset to the clerk's profession, and we should be extremely proud that Southfield has not one, but two municipal clerks on their team. So, on behalf of the city of Southfield and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, it is our pleasure to present you, Sue, with this plaque, designating you as the Master Municipal Clerk.
So, I wish for your sister to hear us, Matt.
Actually, I have my family here. I have two sisters here, my sisters Toby and Eileen, their husbands, my brother-in-law Dan and Steven, and my good friend Sandy, who's also a deputy clerk, is with me, and some of my colleagues from the clerk's office as well. So, thank you, Nancy, I really appreciate your kind remarks, Mr. President, thank you very much, our esteemed council, all of you, our city administrator, and our deputy city attorney. The Master Clerk designation is very meaningful to me, as it represents more than just advanced education in the clerk's profession. The Master Clerk designation, as Nancy said, is the culmination of experience in local government. For me, it totals more than twenty-six years here in the city of Southfield. My tenure has been unique. I've got a one-of-a-kind job resume, having started with the HR department as the city's first loading secretary. I've worked in almost every department of the city during my early years. But my road to this designation was paved with many years working in the Public Safety Department, the mayor's office, and of course, the city clerk's office. As Nancy mentioned, I served the last two years as an elected officer of the Oakland County Clerks Association, and just completed my year as president. I also served as two years on the conference committee for our State Clerks Association as co-chair in charge of volunteers. I've lost nineteen years, almost twenty, as a volunteer with the Southfield Goodfellows, and I enjoy it very much. I can assure you that the city of Southfield's good name and reputation is well-known throughout the state of Michigan. These experiences have made me who I am today, and better equipped to perform my role as deputy city clerk. And as Nancy said, two thousand and twelve was certainly challenging to us in the clerk's profession. Not only did we have the three very challenging elections, but many changes in law, procedure, and materials added an extra dimension to our already demanding to-do list. But I could not have finished everything on my plate without great support teams. I'd like to thank Nancy, my coworkers, such a much. Oh, the city clerk's office for their support of my efforts, my many election helpers that come in on short notice and work with me testing machines until the wee hours, however long it takes. These people are very committed to the city and to the clerk's office and me as well. And last but not least, my family and friends who you've just met, who give me the support I need every single day. So you can see the Master Clerk designation of some of all this, advanced education, experience in local government, social and professional service, and community involvement. So thank you for carrying my pride.
Everyone who works at City Hall knows that Sue is a wonderful person to work with. She's always very bright and sunny. We also have in the audience some members of the clerk's office team, so maybe they could stand.
And then our adopted, Mr. Pierce, way back there.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment. I know Sue Silva has been in the Corps for a very long time. It's amazing, with one day's time, it is absolutely amazing, and she, I didn't know all of her history, I didn't know some of the earlier history, but now I know why she's the main go-to person around here. There isn't a thing she doesn't know, and there isn't a thing she can't do, unfortunately. I mean, I don't know how she does it, I just don't, for such a petite person, that has a kind of stamina and drive and enthusiasm, and I'm sure Ms. Banks would be lost without her. She's just, she's such an addition to the, more than addition, she's an inspiration to all of us, and such a treasure to this organization. Congratulations, Sue, we all love you.
Yeah, you know, I was commenting to Mr. Frasier, this is a great way to start off a meeting. The two maps have asked well-deserved honors to our superintendent of public schools, Dr. Robinson, Dr. McGraw, and to Sue Silva. When I was first elected last year, Sue said to me, Jeremy, if you ever need anything, I know a thing or two about this building, and it's turned out that she's got a thing or two, or three, or four, or five hundred. Sue has been a resource to me as a council member, and I'm so excited to celebrate with you as you've achieved this rank.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Sue.
I'd just like to mention that when I was mayor, Sue, of course, was my secretary, she was my friend, and she was also part of my family. We did so much together, and she stood by this thing, and made my office always click real well, and I'm very proud that she has received this. I should have gave her the purple heart, but when she left my office.
I just want to comment, she's always felt that reward, and that's a real fact, there. Congratulations.
I'd like to, if possible, I could answer, come forward. From time to time, I go to the city clerk's office, and even though the questions that I ask, turns out to be probably not the brightest question to ask, you never know, when Sue gives you the answer, she's such a gracious person, that she'll do whatever she can to make sure that we get the right answer on time and make us feel good, so, thank you.
Mr. Lance. Well, I would say double what Mary said. She, Sue Silva, has never, never turned down a request of something that I needed from the clerk's office. She is the most valuable person, I think, in the city besides our other clerk, Nancy. And I think she was one of the people who kept this city rolling by a more important than any other.
We're working to keep it rolling. Next, I'd like to ask Jerry Stone from Keep Michigan Beautiful to come forward, and anybody else, if you're bringing along, I think your lovely wife, right? And I'd also like to ask Mary Karlock and Brandy Patika from the city staff to come up as well. How are you? Good to see you again, Jerry.
I'm Betty Stone, Jerry is my husband. Excuse me, we are both past, yeah, quote, past presidents of Keep Michigan Beautiful, and I am the award chairman, and have been for many years. The Keep Michigan Beautiful Award Program recognizes exterior projects from Suzanne Marie to Monroe, from Grand Haven to Lexington, and all over the state. The emphasis is on environmental cleanup, site restoration, and historic preservation. Each entry is judged by a group of KMB directors and given one of four awards. The first, the president's plaque, is our highest award, and the one which the city of Southfield receives for the exceptional Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve project. The second award is the Michigan Award, the third, the distinguished service plaque, and the fourth, the award of merit. KMB, the United States Awards, each year they are nominated, they are pretty nominated by people all over the state. If one of you, anyone in this room, sees an exterior project, not a private residence, that is outstandingly beautiful, just please give me a call, look online, Keep Michigan Beautiful Incorporated, get a nomination form, and nominate that person. We're always happy to have nominations. Beautification of blanket diseases contagious, when somebody does something beautiful, somebody else does it too. Tonight, it is my great pleasure to present the president's plaque to the city of Southfield for the Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve project, which supplies so many facets of nature to its visitors, from peaceful sanctuary to fun fishing, to actively hiking its beautiful trails. This award recognizes an excellent environmental project, and thank you all very much.
Actually, I only voted for Carpenter Lake, I didn't have anything to do with it, so the two ladies sitting here, Brandy and Mary, come on out. Please say something. This is the brains behind Carpenter Lake, right?
Well, you know, I'm not much of a talker.
I know you're not. But you deserve it.
We did appreciate this word. Jerry and Benny came to us and asked us to apply for it. We had presented to the beautification of Council of Southeast Michigan, of which Jerry was the president in the later village, and came up there, and so it was an honor to be asked to apply and to get the highest award, and of course, we all appreciate our part. We'll mention that, and Keep Michigan Beautiful's fiftieth year, and Southfield's long been a park, and Keep Michigan Beautiful and beautification, excuse me, beautification complex.
Carpenter Lake is also a master park, that has a very important function in storm ward management. So, Brandy Patika, you might talk about your role.
Sure. This project, we started back in two thousand and five, I believe, and so I was very excited to work on this project for a few years, and the park, if you haven't been there, there's a lake with a, that we restored and put fishing as well, and my, I'm a storm ward manager for the city, so I'm happy to be able to do a project like this and actually incorporate it into a park, and so a lot of people can enjoy it as well. So, thank you so much, and we appreciate you guys coming here tonight to give us this award.
Thank you. You know, Brandy's being very modest, storm ward management may sound like a dull topic, and actually, some communities put tanks underground, and that's how they manage their storm ward approach. So, here we have a very beautiful park, as well as an asset to the community, so thank you all.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a comment, I have a little remembrance of the history of this project, and Ms. Karlock, really, is the person that started this project and spent over twenty years trying to acquire this property, and a lot of battles that she went through, and a lot of, and I think you remember a lot of it yourself, then members get the property, get it together, just put in a beautiful walkway that makes you think you're in a much, much larger park than thirty-eight, the trail system is phenomenal, so I think, I mean, she needs to recognize that, it's been her life's work, basically, with the city of Southfield, and I just wanted to honor her for that. And Brandy, we couldn't do it without you, you're a great team together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finally, I'd like to call up James Jackson from Congressman Sandra Levin's office. For many years, we have been represented by Sandra Levin. He, due to his redistricting, he will no longer be serving the city of Southfield. Congressman Gary Peters, starting generally first, will be our congressman. So this is sort of some farewell remarks from Sandra Levin's office.
Council President, members of the council, city court banks, and all those that are watching, and here in the council chambers, I bring you greetings on behalf of Congressman Sandra Levin, who unfortunately could not be here this evening, he did have to fly back to DC today, but he asked me to come and share with you the official statement that is going to be read into the congressional record of the U.S. House of Representatives as a acknowledgement of the years that the congressman represented the city of Southfield. And it reads, "Mr. Speaker, I rise to commemorate the city of Southfield, and thank the residents of Southfield who have provided me with the honor of representing them in Congress for thirty years. My beloved late wife, Vicki, and I called Southfield our home when I was first elected to Congress, and our congressional office was based there for many years. I have been proud to see the fabric of this community diversify racially, and to watch it develop economically. Historically, when Governor Tass first ordered the area in the South Fields of Bloomville Township surveyed in eighteen seventeen, he could not have guessed at the fine city it would become. Though it became a township in eighteen thirty, it wasn't until nineteen fifty-eight, over a hundred years later, that Southfield would formally incorporate into a city. Southfield has earned its moniker, the center of it all, strong neighborhoods, good schools, manufacturing, office high-rises, which house more than one hundred Fortune 500 companies, and a deep sense of community and and a deep sense of community and friendship. I have enjoyed participating in so many activities and events, like the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Day Peace Walk and commemoration ceremonies at the VFW, activities sponsored by your schools and your strong and vibrant religious institutions, and the effort many years ago to clean up Burg Rouge, which I actually got into. I am pleased at what a leader your community has become in the Veterans History Project, interviewing over 200 veterans and placing their histories at the Library of Congress. And congratulations to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, the Superintendent of South Public Schools, who was recently named the 2013 Superintendent of the Year by the Michigan Association of School Administrators. I was proud to fight for the federal dollars needed to create the Center for Innovative Materials Research. This partnership between Lawrence Tech, TARDAP, and the Army Research Lab was established for the research, development, and testing of carbon fiber composite materials for defense applications. Mayor Lawrence, former mayor and current city councilman Dr. Cossi, along with all of the dedicated city council members and other elected officials, continue to move the city of Southfield forward, and I look forward to following their success in the years to come. As I close, I can say with confidence that the city of Southfield and its residents are in good hands with Congressman Gary Peters. My office will, of course, stay in close touch on issues that impact Oakland County and Southeast Michigan as we all work together to revitalize our Michigan economy. This will be read into the official record tomorrow, and then will be logged into the Library of Congress. Thank you very much."
Mr. Chair, I think the observation that we're going to miss Sandra is because he was also always available to us, so that we could do things that only Southfield could accomplish. And to James Jackson, I know this is a warm personality and his help and assistance in dealing with Congress, always available, and also was the past member of the school board. And James, I wish you well, and we're going to keep this tie close together because you always recognize the need to Southfield. Thank you very much for the job that you've been doing.
Could I say something about Senator Sandra Levin? When I first moved to Southfield, the very first politician that I had occasion to hear was Sandra Levin, at a speech that he gave on Southfield Road, I think, in Lakeville Village, actually. He has been such a friend to us, and his wife too, and so many others that know him. This is like living with a family member. I hope you will convey that to him, because I think we don't go to help him feel that way about him. And he's been a tremendous friend and a tremendous helper in so many ways. I can tell you personally that he helped my brother, who, as a veteran, was having difficulty getting his benefits after an injury, and Sandra Levin got it done. So, that was huge, just huge. So, we'll keep in touch, and thank you. We'll miss you too. So, I know you're here, but don't miss, you know, don't miss Sandra. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, while we do appreciate Congress Levin stating to us that we'll be presenting to Congress tomorrow, I wonder if we could give him a talkative.
I think that would be well deserved. Or speak to Mr. Rosen. If there's nothing else under this portion of the agenda for presentations, then we'll move on. We have no appointments this evening, so we'll move on to minutes. Chairman, Mr. Cossi.
I'd like to move the Committee on the Whole Meeting of October 15th, the regular meeting of October 22nd, the Committee on the Whole Meeting of October 29th, the special meeting of November 15th, the Committee on the Whole Meeting of November 19th. Yes, sir.
It's been moved by Mr. Cossi, supported by Mr. Fraser. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? We have approved our minutes. Next, we move to the consent agenda. There are eight items on the agenda this evening. I want to point out before I go through each one that tonight, we are, on our consent agenda, are three grant applications. Times are tight for municipal finances, and we are, as a city, committed to looking for outside funding sources. And so, tonight, we have just three of the latest grants that the city is applying for. We also have three equipment purchases on the consent agenda. These are replacement items and are in the current budget. So, if I may begin. Consent Agenda A is an authorization, or a request, to submit an EPA grant application in the amount of $405,000, which is for the required local match of $135,000 to upgrade Beachwoods Park in an aesthetically pleasing and environmentally sustainable manner. The first phase of the project was completed in 2011. It involved replacing the north parking lot with previous pavement and installing bioswales next to the new tennis courts to retain and filter stormwater. This grant will be for Phase Two, covering the replacement of the parking lot next to Gulf Course, including similar innovative stormwater management features. Beachwoods Park is located between 89 mile roads and within the Ruze watershed. If the grant application is successful, the whole project and funding plans of the city's matching requirements will be presented to the city council at a subsequent meeting. The project will be initiated in the 2013-14 fiscal year. Consent Agenda Item B is authorization to purchase replacement vehicles and equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department through the State of Michigan and Oakland County Parks Purchasing Program. Using these two programs provides the city with the most advantageous pricing by combining our requirements with those of other public agencies. Each proposed replacement request has been reviewed in terms of mileage, repair history, and job function requirements. Expenditures total $112,871, with $87,407 coming from the equipment replacement account, deteriorated over the useful life of the equipment to be replaced, and $25,454 from the 2012-13 Parks and Recreation Budget. Two replacement dump trucks with snowplows and one fairway mower to maintain the fairways in Evergreen Hills Golf Course are also involved. Consent Agenda C is authorization for the Parks and Recreation Department and the Department of Public Works to apply for a $100,000 grant from the World Wildlife Fund. By the way, this grant was brought to our attention by residents Peggy Collins and Robert Thompson. This grant program is entitled Earth Our City Challenge. Its purpose is to engage the public in understanding the impact of climate change on our community and local actions which might mitigate the impact. There is no local match required. If the grant application is successful, it will be returned to council with the specifics prior to implementing this program. Consent Agenda Item D is authorization to purchase 24 golf carts at a cost of, with a trade-in allowance of $71,700. This purchase is from Midwest Golf and Turf Club Cart of Millwood, Michigan. The anticipated useful life of the cart is nine years. Analysis of typical golf cart rental revenues indicates that the payback on this purchase will be approximately one year. Funds are provided for this purchase, or purchase rather, in the equipment replacement account and the 2012-13 Parks and Recreation Budget. Consent Agenda Item E is authorization for the staff to submit a grant application to the state of Michigan in the amount of $1.2 million to the 2012 Light Elimination Program to facilitate demolition in the city of building community demolition. Consent Agenda F, this item involves approval of three requests to enable the accomplishment of the Inglewood Park parking lot and stormwater improvement project. Inglewood Park is our most heavily used park, so we look forward to the addition of 50 additional parking spaces, improvements in the drainage and stormwater management, and resurfacing of the entire lot. This project was reviewed by the mayor and council at the December 3 committee of the whole meeting and received unanimous support. The cost estimate of the project was $600,000, with $143,500 matching to be funded, or rather, will be funded already from an EPA grant that we already conceded. These actions requested bringing the project to fruition. One is approval of the loan of $457,500 at 3% for a period of 15 years from the local improvement revolving fund, or what we call the LRF fund, for capital projects to Parks and Recreation. This amount combines with $143,500 grants to provide a total of $600,000 to fund the project. Authorization to initiate design, or number two rather of this action item, is authorization to initiate design engineering of the project. And Part Three, authorizing the placement of the project under the superintendent control of the Southfield Building Authority. Consent Item G is authorization for the acquisition of a 105-ton carrier chiller for the ice arena from Griffin International LLC of Chesterfield, Michigan. This replaces a 42-year-old original equipment chiller from 1970 with an original useful life of 25 years. The chiller stopped functioning two weeks ago and needs to be replaced. The new chiller is designed to act in tandem with the chiller that was installed in 2011. This purchase is an anticipation of needs of the upcoming spring skating season for start-up needs in making new ice after the summer season, or to make new ice after repairs or maintenance needs may arise during the spring season. Funding is provided in the amount of $60,000 in the equipment revolving fund for this replacement. This agreement that the project will play under the superintendent control of the Southfield Building Authority. And Consent Agenda H is the final consent agenda item, and is receipt of bids for the demolition of property located at 2525 Southwood, along with site clearance in accordance with an order of the 46th District Court. The bid award is to securer demolition of Detroit, Michigan, in a low bid of $13,950. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-13 budget, and the cost of demolition will be placed at the leaning on the property. Mr. President? Yes, sir.
I move approval of consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
All right. Support moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Seymour, to approve the consent agenda?
I have a question. Yes, President. On Item E, is this application for a grant just for a single item usage, or can we also fund money to that for items in the future that will come up like Item H?
This is for the possible demolition of the Monmouth Hotel.
Right. Can we, is that?
I'd have to ask Mr. Sherez. I don't think so, but...
We apply specific to that.
Okay.
If the water is substantially less, I think, then we would see if we could apply it to other uses.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, seconded by Ms. Seymour, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? All right. Next on our agenda, we have no public hearings or site plans tonight, so we're going to go to our communications. And first on the agenda is Ms. Geraldine Amato.
My name is Geraldine Amato. My reason for appearing here, with the hope and prayer that there are those within sound of my voice who would seriously consider my testimony, I have made feel unwelcome since I've come from the very beginning. But I persist because what I have learned since I've been out of school, to me, is very serious, and the reality that we face is not being discussed in the controlled public forum, including here. Those who now control this nation are not good people. And let the good people of this nation rise up to the occasion and put up some resistance rather than this continuous compliance and obeisance, we will be lost as a free nation. There's a history that is buried, premeditatedly, in the history books that are taught to our youngsters at school and even in universities. We are on borrowed time and borrowed money. Those who control the wealth of this nation are not the good people. People such as Thomas Jefferson are maligned in the press, but that man had quite a bit of poignant remarks to make about central banks controlling economies. I think we need to review those. I think the reason for maligning him is to prevent us from giving any credibility to what he had to say about that. We are a bank to credit script. That means every grant, every loan, every financial endeavor that we engage in is with borrowed money. We don't own our homes, even if we paid off the so-called mortgages, because we paid it with bank to credit script. We don't own the clothes on our backs today because we bought them with bank to credit script. And if we allow these malevolent people who have taken control of the wealth and every facet of communications that reach us, that to deceive us and manipulate us, to get toe-to-toe to this nation, we will suffer dire consequences. I heard that after I left last time that there was a serious discussion about cutting back the time that the public had senior. The public has minimal participation in these meetings as far as remarks, and it's mere ritual, I understand that. And I heard the expression was "gloom and doom." While we could play at politics and we could play at prosperity, when it's all built on a very shaky foundation, and if these people foreclose on this nation, they will cut us off at will. Any of us who are not deemed useful to them will not be permitted to survive. We are in a situation today in such an area as this. We do not provide our own food, our clothing, our fuel. All our resources are sent in from those who control them from elsewhere. If they wanted to close off our supply and support, few of us can support ourselves in the current order of things. In the 1930s, when that grand depression hit this country, most people lived on small family farms. So, were they able to provide their own food, usually water and fuel and some transportation with livestock? Today, we would be totally crippled and unable to move. And yet, we continue to neglect the duty of using what resources are still within our reach to provide for the future, to provide for the reality that we face with this nation. Are we going to continue to sit at the feet of people who lie to us continuously? We can tell they're lying. Now, recently, they've talked about the right to work legislation. Well, the whole labor history has been buried as well, but in the origins of this nation, when we're removing the so-called free economy or free market, which we don't have, we have controlled economy. controlled economy. Laborers had stock in the companies they worked for. Public corporations had limited franchises, they were not allowed to exist in perpetuity. The established courts have ruled, like the aristocracy rules, that corporations are persons with 14th Amendment personhood, and they have charters in perpetuity, and yet human beings are immortal and will die. But these corporations are owned by the owners of the wealth of this nation.
This is about 15 seconds.
And the laborers now are being served a weekend. You know, this is all trivial stuff about 15 seconds and what goes on at these meetings. It's so, it's shabby political enforcement ship. My time is up.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if you'd like to just execute me for speaking something here that should not be said as well.
Next on our public participation, and I neglected to mention, we have up to five minutes, Mr. Gerard Mullin.
I am proud to say that since 1961, I have worked here in this city, and since 1968, I pay taxes here in my city, the great city of Southfield, which is a bad and good city. My address is gerardmullin2012@gmail.com. Later tonight, council will enact ordinance number 1598, a fence ordinance to be installed in section 5.371 of City Charter. And in doing so, council will reiterate and break the law. Stat says section 5.371 is currently being occupied by the easements law that was enacted by council on April 30, 2007 by ordinance number 1547. In codified law, you can't use the same identical number twice for two different Redundancy is a constant theme that runs throughout this council. For example, council likes to reissue the same ordinance numbers again and again. 1452, 1559, and 1564 are some of the more popular ordinance numbers recently reissued by this council. You folks in the TV audience might want to play these numbers in Michigan State Library. Again, here are these numbers, 1452, 1559, and 1564. Good luck. To verify that section 5.371 is redundant, do the following. Go to the city clerk's website. Now go to the left center of the page. Directly under Resources, click on City Charter. Then click on Title V. Then click on Chapter 48. Then click on Section 5.371, Easements. Also, I have at hand for your examination a hard copy of Title V, which proves that I, the mere resident, am right, and you, the elected officials, are right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. We'll take your comments under advisement. Next, we have Pamela Gerald.
Braden?
I'm Braden.
My name is Pamela Gerald. I am your independent voice for Southfield. If you are watching this meeting on Cable 15 or listening to my voice via YouTube or audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155, or my telephone number is 248-352-9188. I am just a phone call away. To my fellow residents that have came out to these meetings to voice your opinion about Walmart, I thank you very much and keep on coming. The next meeting will be January 14 and then on January 28. The public hearing for Walmart will be at the January 28 meeting. Please sign up to speak under Communications regarding Walmart. People, what matters is your voice and your input. Just a reminder, in 2013, there will be an election. Four seats will be available. We, the people, have spoken and told this council, we do not want Walmart in the city of Southfield. Take note on how the council members vote, against or for Walmart. In about 50 days, you, the magnificent seven, will vote on one of the most sensitive and important issues that will affect the Beverly Hills residents, Lethal Village residents, and more importantly, our residents, the voters in Southfield. Council, what matters with this issue and your upcoming vote is the following: the increased traffic flow at the intersection of 12 Mile and Southfield Road, the direct impact on residents with the increased traffic flow, the risk of more accidents, and that's one of the most dangerous intersections in the city, county, and in the state. After reading the traffic study, I am not, and I repeat, not convinced that Walmart will work in the city of Southfield. I have data collected from SEMCO, Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments regarding the 12 Mile-Southfield Road intersection. The data gives a very in-depth account of the volume traveled on Southfield Road, the number of crashes, the hours the road is mostly traveled along, with information obtained from the Oakland County Road Commission or the Road Commission of Oakland County, RCOC. I report that Walmart alluded to the fact that RCOC or the Road Commission approved of their project, and that's not true. The Road Commission does not approve of any project. They only address the impact or change in traffic on the roads that they have jurisdiction over. The Road Commission of Oakland County does have jurisdiction over both 12 Mile and Southfield Road. In other words, they only are concerned with the level of driving service and the traffic on their roads. The 12 Mile-Southfield Road intersection is among the most heavily traveled intersection, and therefore, the raw number of crashes are very high. By putting the Walmart in the Sin Beach Church location, the traffic volume will quadruple. Crashes will increase, and there will be more headaches to the residents. The residents in that immediate area will have their quality of life taken away, their security blanket pulled right from up under them. In addition, the RCOC is doing an environmental study on that corridor, the Southfield Road corridor, from 9 Mile to about 150 feet north of 13 Mile. The environmental assessment study will take up to 18 months. How can the impact on the road be determined prior to the RCOC completing their study? The normal traffic on 12 Mile Road is currently degraded to an E, and putting the Walmart there would further degrade that intersection to probably an F or failure. Walmart's traffic study, I report, was done to naturally serve their purpose. Walmart overlooked the fact that their peak hours do not match the intersection's peak hours. Walmart putting beautiful cosmetic pole lighting is not going to correct the traffic flow problems and reduce the number of crashes. Here's the data if you're interested, council. I urge you to listen to the voters. We do not want a Walmart in that location and in the city of Southfield. We don't want you guys to make a big deal about the $100,000 that they will pay in taxes because like Target, Target got a tax appeal, Walmart will probably do a tax appeal, and they'll probably even go for subsidy. I don't know. They'll do just like that. Thank you very much. So again, I'm sending a message to you guys, and I want the people to hear me. What matters is unity in the community. What matters is the voice of the people, and the people say no to Walmart.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald.
And here's the data.
You may give it to the clerk if you'd like. Next on our communications is Brian Jones. Mr. Jones?
And can I give you this video to watch?
Sure. I'll leave it to the clerk.
You gotta return it to the library tomorrow.
I won't be returning it to the library, so...
If you'd like one to speculate, I have private contacts. How do you know?
Gerard Mullin, please. Mr. Jones, that's us four.
This is Brian Jones, Flat House and Town Center. And I'd like to start off by saying I'm aware of the email contact question asked upon into the communication, and I am awaiting the responses. Okay. And I'd like to hone in to my acute position of renovating and redeveloping in rundown conditions with the Congress at the Northland Shopping Center and the activities along the 8 Mile Detroit border. I would like to assist in this process due to my experiences with inner-city life elements and capacity to relate with the people that concentrate in that area. And I'd like to work in cooperation with Jerry Moss and so enjoy that effect into their capabilities and personal and cultural dispositions. Okay. I would also like to applaud the city of Southfield and the council body for their competence, and the results they are producing show by thoroughly addressed issues on the previous consecutive meeting period agendas, producing growth and development in six key elements today on the agenda and council statements in the conclusion. And in concluding my points, I would like to, also add, would like to, you guys are a citizen in Southfield, and a young man with many experiences nationwide, I would like to cooperate in the development of the plan and budget to seek the attraction of corporate interest and private funding and the redevelopment of those domains along the 8 Mile border. I know that there's a lot of light and encourageable activities around there, and they're challenging, and I think that a lot of times people would prefer to overlook the responsibility, but for Southfield to remain a well-rounded, clear city, I do believe that it should be a complete and total thorough package city on all sides and square. And Detroit 8 Mile border may be one of the more difficult and challenging dimensions to address, but our services, as someone who is very perched with the complexities of that issue, to address it. So if you guys are ready and willing to correspond on that, you know how to contact me via the internet by email. Okay, thank you very much.
Can I say this, Mr. President? We had meetings scheduled last week, but due to the nature of that meeting, we moved up until 4:30. Councilman Moss and I are going to be re-scheduled when our meeting is, so you can look forward to hearing them, but with getting a week in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience.
Okay. Guys, have a nice evening and day. Thank you, Bernie. Next, we have Colleen Bassett.
Colleen Bassett, 20645 Woodburn, City Council Mayor and City Administrator. I know the rezoning issue at 12 Mile-Southfield Road is not on the agenda tonight, but I still thought it was appropriate for discussion, kind of below the road storm. As a supporter of the proposed rezoning and possible Walmart, I wish to share my observations while attending the planning commission meetings. The petition of Walmart did an outstanding job of listening to residents' concerns regarding their site plan and making needed changes. Walmart's higher ground mounted support sign was lowered to a garden ground sign. The guy's three entrance position was moved in response to residents' request. Store hours can be eliminated from mid-96 AM if that is what Southfield wants. Walmart is also upgrading the bus stops on the property, creating a sidewalk with terming decorative signs along the sidewalk, along Southfield Road. Today, I passed that 12 Mile-Southfield Road, and there was a woman pushing a baby carriage. She had 100 mile, about 100 feet of sidewalk, and at that point, the little baby carriage just dropped into the mud because that's where the sidewalk ended. It seems like the sidewalk along there makes all the sense. And of course, we would remove that ugly parking lot with weeds protruding from it and replace it with a brand-new parking lot. How much better this whole thing would look. The building itself, I work from the planning commission meetings, would have delightful ambience about it, and would have embellishments on the building, such as windows, awnings, planters, benches, and a cozy little courtyard. I mean, how attractive compared to what we're looking at right now. And do not forget about the taxes. We still do have to think about the taxes, that is important. We get about $316,000 taxes, about 100, over $100,000 for our city, and a lot of it, $100,000 going to the schools. We're partnering with our schools. That is important to us, that is part of Southfield. It's not just something unimportant. And, Mr. Lance, I know so too, they are not asking for tax payments. I appreciate council continuing performing due diligence on this property as the council approaches the date in January, where the revitalization of this highly visible section of Southfield can be possible. I would also like to thank you for the difficult job you do up here. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bassett. And next, we have Mr. Thomas Bassett.
My name is Tom Bassett. I live also at 20645 Woodburn in Southfield. I ask that you continue to do something that you've been doing, and that is to work diligently to bring business development into our city. Without new businesses creating new tax revenues and redevelopment of deteriorated property, our community will not be able to meet the needs of the residents as we go into the future. The tax revenue just will not be there if we do not redevelop it. We need to specifically rezone and redevelop the property that's located at 12 Mile and Southfield Road. We need to do it now. On January 28, council will be able to move us forward and away from what is now a center of light in our city. What are some of the choices that are to be made? We can enhance the area property values, or we can continue a progressive property value decline. We can respond to the need for improved traffic control and improved road conditions, or we can continue traffic flow obsolescence, which is where it is today. We can go with active land use zoning for the purpose of development, or we can have vacant property stagnation calcified by outdated and inappropriate zoning. We can add property tax income for our city and our schools, as was mentioned, or we can, in frustration, we can just accept that we have a dying tax base. We just need to do that. Who are the actors who are going to move the city forward? City planning staff is done. City Planning Council has done and is doing its job to optimize land use for the benefit of our city. The developer in this case has brought forward a proposal with a significant number of site plan improvements in response to requests from the community, in response to input from the planning commission. The planning commission considered extensive public input, some of it related to land use during its public hearing. The planning commission finally did recommend to you B3 zoning for this unique, very large parcel. The planning commission has recommended the developer's site plan be approved. There's a real opportunity to redevelop this area of our city. Southfield City Council needs to continue to confirm that Southfield is open for business, that we know our future lies in being open for business. Let's get into two thousand and thirteen, moving forward by following the recommendations that came after very careful study by the planning commission as you act on the twenty-eighth of January. And I thank you for your consideration and I hope that you will agree with me that this is a redevelopment project that needs to move forward for the benefit of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Next, I'd like to call on Ken Peterson. And Mr. Peterson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, council president, city administrator. My name is Ken Peterson. I live in High House of Town Center. I'm a twenty-year resident of Southfield. I'm president of the condo association of over two hundred families and I serve on the city central advisory board. I love Southfield and I am vitally concerned about the future of our city. I'm here this evening to advocate my voice to others supporting the commercial rezoning of the St. Beat property. Not only does the city need the potential real property tax revenue, but we also need to send a message that we are truly open for business. We are a business-driven city. Our advertising brands that Southfield is the premier business address in Michigan. Twenty-seven billion square feet of office space, over seven billion square feet of retail and industrial space. Southfield is home to over eighty-six hundred businesses. You, our elected officials, are here to consider all issues surrounding the rezoning and the site use. As the elected representatives of the residents of Southfield, you cannot ignore the voices and concerns of those who live on Guy Street or the other residents of Southfield. But there's another issue that you cannot ignore. The city of Southfield needs a tax revenue generated by commercial property. Our city runs on tax revenue, providing the city services that our residents rightly expect, and businesses are sixty-five percent of our tax base. Look at that another way. Businesses pay for two out of every three police officers, two out of every three firefighters, two out of every three library hours, paid for by businesses located in and paying taxes in Southfield. Southfield's problem, our problem, is the shrinking tax base. In Washington, our leaders are looking at a looming fiscal cliff. Here in Southfield, we are already in a revenue crevice, a trough created by our shrinking tax base that we've been struggling through since the start of the Great Recession. This year, our city's taxable values are down eleven percent on top of thirteen percent drop last year. Over the past five years, Southfield's tax base has shrunk thirty-six percent. Our experts are predicting that by two thousand and sixteen, our tax base will have shrunk fifty percent. In other words, funding for city services will have shrunk to one half of what it was in two thousand and eight. That fifty percent drop does not take into consideration further tax revenue reductions resulting from commercial property tax appeals. Currently, there are three hundred and one such appeals outstanding. Such appeals represent a potential loss of ten million dollars to the city. Further on the horizon, Lansing may have the potential of elimination of the PPT, the Business Personal Property Tax, likely loss to the city, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And speaking of Lansing, I have not yet mentioned that Southfield's second-largest general revenue, general fund revenue source, state shared revenue, is still down forty percent from ten years ago. To balance Southfield's general fund operating expenses with our shrinking revenues, our leaders have allowed attrition to within our ranks of city employees that combine and streamline processes and balance the budget without layoffs and without setbacks in critical city services. However, I am growing concerned that many Southfield residents are unaware of our SATAX revenue crevice and our budget challenges. Because they're not personally affected, our city management has done such a good job of doing more with less, that the city's budget challenges are invisible. Our streetlights are on, our police officers and firefighters show up, our roads are being repaired. What budget challenges? For one resident with whom I spoke, it was only the reduction of library hours that touched her personally. One cutback that affected her life directly and hinted at the bigger budget challenges in Southfield. Our tax revenue losses are predicted to continue into two thousand and sixteen, and by that time-
You have fifteen seconds.
-our tax base will have shrunk to fifty percent of what it was back in the day just five years ago. This evening, I'm asking that you support the rezoning proposal, the CBT property, and do for, do so for the city, or you're good, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next, I'd like to call on Gerard Rattenberry.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. My name is Gerard Rattenberry and I reside at twenty-nine four eleven Guy Street. So I am in very distant this property they're talking about. I am a longtime resident of Southfield, moving from LaMonia in nineteen seventy-three. I raised my four children with my wife, Rosemary, and which she is now deceased, and we have been members of St. Beat's parish. I love Southfield and I, well, let me go on. My children attended St. Beat's school. Initially, they attended a neighborhood, Northbrook School, that's a child development center. More than five years ago, St. Beat was closed. Four parishes were closed, including St. Michael's. A new parish was created and named Church of the Transfiguration on the St. Michael's site. Change is difficult, but it's part of our life experience. The site beat site has been vacant too long and it has become unsightly. This is not good for our, and it's not good for the city of Southfield. There is a cost to maintain the closed parish, closed parish site, and that cost is borne by the new parish of Church of the Transfiguration. The diocese initially tried to find a buyer who would use existing church and school facilities. Unfortunately, it hasn't worked out. But I'm here now to express my positive thinking that this is now the time to rezone this property for business. Southfield can certainly use the property tax, as was mentioned by other speakers. The diocese has at this time only one potential purchaser, and that is Walmart. But Walmart has changes to their initial site plan, has made changes to initial site plan to accommodate the concerns of the nearby residents as well as the Southfield residents and also the planning commission's recommendations. Change is difficult, very difficult. We can't just sit here and hope we get the perfect buyer for the site. Perfect, of course, depends on who we're talking to. We must move forward. Certainly, we will have more traffic, but we live in a city and there are trade-offs between convenience and having less traffic and open spaces. I am in favor of the rezoning of the site and also for, also the pursuance of the sale of the property to Walmart for an acceptable store, and I hope on the twenty-eighth of January, the council will see that. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Rattenberry. Next, we have Howard Penn.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Howard Penn. I reside at two nine nine zero zero Woodland in Southfield. I am a longtime resident of the city, going back to elementary school at Vandenberg Thompson Junior High with Mr. Steimer, a graduate of Southfield later than seventy-four. So I have a long history with the city. I grew up, I'm rather not far from Twelve Mile and Southfield, so I'm very familiar with the goings on in the neighborhood. A couple of points. I know the council has the ability to make good decisions and right decisions. It's obvious from tonight, we heard about Carpenter Lake, that was a good decision, and we've seen decisions probably in the past that were not so good. I do believe that we need business in the area. It's important to change. It's important to add tax revenue. However, I don't feel that the B3 zoning change for St. Beat is appropriate. I think it's too dense. It's a dense, most concentrated commercial use Southfield would allow, the obvious increase in traffic wouldn't improve the issue. And looking to the future, the traffic's not going to get any better, it's only going to get worse. A lower density B2 or possibly a B1 should be considered. I don't know what those all entail, but I think, again, commercial use is appropriate, but just not B3. We need to explore those opportunities, I think, a little deeper in depth to see what would be appropriate. What I saw for the site plan really bothered me, the placement of the building on the site. The building itself, the Walmart itself, faces north. All the other commercial businesses face the street, you know, Target, Home Depot, most everything faces Southfield Road. The site plan shows that the side and the back of the building are up against Twelve Mile and Southfield Road, which just struck me as wrong. The Twelve Mile Roads, the Twelve Mile Roads, Southfield Road intersection were the most prominent intersections in Oakley County. Just imagine if you were in a car northbound on Southfield, you're stopped at the latest Twelve Mile. If you look to your left, what do you see? No, really, what would you see? You would see these giant walls just like this, looking at us, they're thirty-foot tall walls, the back of the side of Walmart. And, you know, Walmart said they would throw some trees and grass and what you're looking at is pretty much just thirty-foot walls. The architect claims the buildings will have a pleasant appearance, but what do you expect to hear from someone that attended the Walmart School of Architecture and Design? As they say in the old Xerox, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. This is a big box, a really big box. We are in a unique situation in a unique time for this site. You have a blank slate with which to work. With such a high-profile site, you should have developed a bit of special. This is one of the gateways into our city. Make a statement, demand different, demand better. This proposal is wrong. Walmart is asking to put a hundred pounds of garbage in a ten-ton bag. It just doesn't fit. Demand better. What worries me really is the future. Is this site that Walmart, is this a site that Walmart really wants? I believe that their end goal is on Southfield Road, but not just this site. What they really want is Southfield Plaza. Southfield Plaza is owned B3 and the parking and allotted space is a good fit, it's a natural fit. Perhaps this is all a high-stakes poker game with random characters in the property order. Think about this scenario. Let's assume the city council approves the site plan with the rezoning as is. Think into the future, perhaps, you know, twenty twenty-five, it's only thirteen years from now. Walmart is operating a super duper twenty-four-hour store at Southfield Plaza. So what happened? Why aren't they there? Well, five years prior, in two thousand and twenty, Walmart ran the front of Mcfield for Southfield Plaza and what became of the Twelve Mile Southfield site. Well, it's been vacant shelf for five years once Walmart moved out. They refused to lease or demolish the property because they're protecting themselves from any competition moving in, and there is nothing that the council can do about it. Maybe it'll become a standstill. Is this really what you wanted? If you don't think this is possible, ask Mayor Foulson. Ask Mayor Foulson Warren. He knows, he speaks from history. I guess, in summary, I'm not against change. I'm just saying we need to really think this is the right spot for Walmart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pandley. And next, we have Robert Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Walker. Hello, everyone. Thanks for listening to me. I'm Robert Walker. I live at one eight three three nine Winter Gate. That's about maybe seven hundred feet from the proposed Walmart location. And I'm grateful tonight with the opportunity to speak in a less emotional environment because I'm only going to bring up things that I found out about Walmart since the last meeting, and I think it might be of interest to hear. Mr. Hinks, who was here last time, he has said that Walmart would bring in two hundred and forty, two hundred and seventy jobs. I understand that when Walmart comes to a location, other businesses that don't compete directly with Walmart also follow. And I thought it was very interesting that at that meeting, he stated that the two gas stations at the corner were very excited about the project, but I quote, he said, once they found out that Walmart wasn't selling fuel. And I think that's a very telling statement. Quote, "Once they found out Walmart was not going to sell fuel, now they were very excited." If they were selling fuel, I wonder what would their position be? Second thing is that Walmart is willing to pay what you do with improved traffic lights and renovations to the sidewalk and stuff like that. And I understand that. What troubles me a little about that is Walmart was speaking almost as if they were a government entity that's responsible for improving infrastructure. So I say, well, if you talk like that, it's probably going to work like that. And I know that governments, and all of us understand, governments can't exist without collecting tax. Now, if Walmart proposed the tax, I would go out and think they can do it, but they're talking like the government. When you talk like something, normally you're going to walk like that. I also think, and this is just a funny joke on my part, when they propose putting the traffic lights up there, and I wish Mr. Barris was here, what if, like the other gentleman said that they left? Would they be able to take their traffic lights with them? I don't think so, but it's kind of funny if they did, as a visiting customer. I looked up a little bit about Walmart's health benefits, and I don't know, like, I think Mr. Moss commented that this is a micro macro issue. Maybe this is too macro. But I did find out that in order to get health benefits at Walmart, you have to work there for two years if you're part-time. You have to work there six months if you're full-time. Maybe that's average, maybe not, but I thought it was telling that the gentleman, Mr. Hinks, would reply directly to your question, Council President, about part-time, full-time percentage. I found out that the higher-up guy, him probably gets lost, is named Steve Recibo. He was asked last year, point blank by ACC, he wouldn't tell them. All he said is that our competitors share our hourly rate, we share our hourly rate information, which they said was, I think, twelve dollars and fifteen cents. And he said, "That's more than most of our competitors share." So I'm saying, you're never going to get that number of part-time, full-time. They could tell you tomorrow morning, how many cans of home movie out of course, six ounce, two hundred cans they sold, by store, by city, by region across the whole world. They spend about $4 billion a year on IT service. I know a little bit about IT, I have a degree in computers from Wayne State. It's staggering my belief that they can't tell us, or they wouldn't tell us, how many part-time, full-time. And that's the way that they end up driving their cost out. I think another thing that was very interesting is that Walmart fully pays 33% of their healthcare benefits. Again, I don't know if that's average, not average, but it is out there for you to determine. There's a Walmart spokesperson, her name was Mona Wilson, she admitted to the Los Angeles Times that, quote, "Walmart is a great match for a lot of people, but if you are a sole provider for your family and do not have the time or the skills to move up the ladder, then maybe this is not the right fit for you." Walmart attracts seniors, college students, and people looking for a second income. Most of those people, just by that statement, have to be, by definition, part-time. I thought it was also interesting that, I looked up a New York Times article back from 2006, Walmart executives said that they wanted part-time. They want to increase part-time from 20% to 40%. Now, I would say, if your boss told you two, six years ago that you'd have to do something, I would say that mission was accomplished, or otherwise he wouldn't be working there. So I think I have a few more questions, but in concluding, I think that it's important to realize that right now, our society, and this is a sad and true fact, has moved to the same basic attribute of human nature, which is, "I don't care if you gave yours as long as I gave mine."
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Please do. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next is Susan Madgel cousin, however, for the record, she called in and said that she's under the weather this evening, will not be attending. So we'll move down to Mrs. Rhonda Shinkie.
I'd just like to provide some clarity on the man from Walmart.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Rhonda Shinkie, and I'm in the 2704 in Earl Karren Road in Southfield, Michigan. I believe last week, a lot of things were debated, some direct questions, I mean, from the man from Walmart. I passed to Mr. Fraser, the only print that pays there that Walmart will provide, they will not put what their pay is in print anywhere. So you have to go to different websites, but their starting wage is 7:25 an hour, all their healthcare is paid out of their wages, which is under the poverty level, the insurance is 30, 35% of what their cost is. So back there, I sent to all of you in your emails, links to free viewing of the two Walmart documentaries that are very, very well done and provide a boatload of information. One is the high cost, Walmart, the high cost of low prices, and frontline is Walmart, they did this for a matter. Now, last week, the man from Walmart raised a little big issue about how wonderful things were in Roseme, California, how they went into the city and the residents didn't want it, city council wanted the Walmart there, so the city council supported them. They recalled the city council members and they lost their seats, but they won their seats back in the next election. Either he outright lied, or he just forgot the facts. They recalled the city council members. The members were not recalled. Walmart gave $400,000 to their efforts to not be recalled, however, they lost their seats during the next election. Every election that has had city council or mayor that opposed Walmart in Roseme, California, has been hit by a whole boatload of money from Walmart to get them off the council. Now presently, the present mayor of Roseme, California, who's named Steven Lodge, 27 years old, he's a big supporter of Walmart, he is now a Walmart surrogate that goes around California, helping to promote and try to get Walmart into other cities. Right now, he's been working very diligently in Chinatown to get a Walmart built there because they're really opposed to it. Also, with the nice lofty story he told about Moore, that Moore's store that he talked about that was vacant, has been vacant for nine years. They were just holding on to the property. Everything that's gone out of that site, except for old country buses. The new mayor came in a couple of years ago and asked them, "We've got to do something about this property." Walmart did not respond. Walmart only responded to the mayor when the mayor started going to the media, calling for a national boycott of Walmart. Then Walmart said, "Oh, okay, well, we're going to fix the store now, we're going to put $20 million into it," although they haven't started. They have the Supercenter down the street, which they built after that first smaller store. Walmart has a two-pronged plan, and I have documentation of everything that I'm telling you here. There's a two-pronged plan, two stores, two miles or 10 minutes apart. Southfield is not the sweet spot. They're either trying to get across into the plaza across the street or Birmingham. I think they're trying to get into Birmingham. I talked to the guy after the meeting last week, he told me, he said, "This is what I envisioned for Southfield Store. I envisioned soccer moms coming down 696, getting off on Southfield Road, stopping by the Walmart there, and then going to their homes in Birmingham." I said, "I live in Southfield, if I go to Birmingham, I don't go down Southfield Road." He said, "Well, that's what we're hoping for." So I think that this Southfield Store is going to be a stepping stone to try to get something in Birmingham, which doesn't make sense because there's money in Troy. The tax avoidance scheme that someone on the council asked a lot last week, that's still in effect, they have beaucoup lawsuits against them right now. There's one in Wisconsin for them not paying taxes, there's one in California, there's all across the country, there was one in Michigan a few years ago, Walmart is not paying their taxes. They would rather go to court because they can hold up cities in court for endless, endless years to avoid paying these taxes. I can provide information. Okay, I can provide information on that. I can tell you, please watch the two Walmart documentaries, so you will know exactly what it is that you're going to bring into the city and propel this to an end anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information and the information.
Next, we have Stephanie English. Is Mr. English in the house? Does the record show that she's not present? Then we'll move on to Sharon Myers.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Myers. I work at 25225 Co. Road in Southfield. I am the business manager at Church of Transfiguration. I am coming here tonight in support of the rezoning of B3 of some property at St. East at 12 and Southfield, and also in support of approval of the site plan for Walmart. I have been business manager the entire time that property has been vacant. We have had several churches look at that, we have had charter schools look at that property, we have had no business look at the property. It's been religious organizations and schools. Walmart has been the only viable offer that we've had on their property in the entire five years. We have worked with two different real estate companies during that time, and I strongly encourage or support and vote on this, and that would help the redeployment of our parish assets back into the parish and back into the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communications. And next, we move on to the council portion of the agenda, and we have several conference expense reports.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fraser.
I will the approval of the expense report for Mr. Kenton Steber for attending the National League of Cities, Congress of Cities, and Boston, Massachusetts. It's board.
It's moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, always in favor.
Aye.
I will abstain, opposed.
Opposed.
I, no, I said I will abstain, and then any opposed?
Oh, oh, oh.
I ran that all together, I'm sorry, I slowed it down. Next, we have the expense report for Jeremy Moss.
So moved.
Support.
And moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, always in favor.
Aye.
Chair, I move my opinion here. For the record, I stand.
Support.
Okay.
With the motion, CD Congress Cities.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for the expense report of Marlon Fraser, supported by, or made by Mr. Percasi, supported by Ms. Jordan, always in favor.
I'm in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Always in favor.
Aye. I stand.
Okay, motion carried. The mayor is out of town this evening, so we, let me ask you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to comment that a lot of the discussion is built on Walmart and them petitioning to come into the city. And I would hope that those who speak pro or against the boycott, against the petition, come up with some suggestions, positive suggestions of what they can do with the present condition of that quarter. I have two sons that live in that nearby area, and I live just two miles away. And I just keep hearing the negatives, and I keep hearing the things about what kind of, how they run the business named Walmart. And we don't ask how Macy's runs their business or any other business. So I have to kind of take that from my thoughts because, but it's really put is, you know, what is the use and what kind of site plan? And if it rezones B3, what are the alternatives? And something has to happen to these properties, and I would hope that we come forward and come up with some solutions. Everything that was mentioned regarding the lack of ability to be dealing with giving services in the future is real. And I sit as the chair of the finance committee, and we have Pastor Randy as our auditor, and they expressed their opinion of our future, kind of giving us an opinion of what our future looks like. In 2025, they are taking our general fund and cutting it in half and asking us to provide the same services, which you know that's impossible. So, you know, I would want to sit up here and trying to make a decision for not only Walmart, because that cannot be a consideration of mine, but to look at the future for our city and how we're going to continue that that's the service that we presently give, and we do. We excel at every service we provide. And there was a statement made that the individuals who live here and work here really don't realize what has occurred inside the city hall to provide the services. We presently are 200 people now as far as operations. We have fewer directors of departments than we've ever had, and we're still providing the same amount of services. It becomes more and more difficult. So I make these comments only to not support anything, not to change anybody's mind, but to keep in mind that living in Southfield is going to have challenges. And we sit here and try to say how we're going to address these challenges. So while you're thinking about that piece of property, B3, you know, what is the solution? And what is the amount of B3 that would be placed on it? What type of stores? Keeping in mind all the closed shopping centers that we presently have, the lack of restaurants that we have, the lack of theaters we have, and just, actually no compliments to what people really need to have a well-rounded community. And, you know, I sit there at another model, Mosh, or look at that shopping center that's causing the foreclosure, and look at on that Southfield Road, where Farmer Jack left, and look, it's now another athletic club or whatever, and deterioration of Big Lloyd, deterioration of Michigan National Bank, which used to be there, deterioration of the shopping centers at Edward Street. And I try to weigh all these things in making some kind of a judgment. I want everybody to know that I'm looking at every option carefully, and I hope that the residents do also. And if they have suggestions, please give us a call. We have a lot of time before, you know, January 28. And I'd like to hear some really positive things that we can do with those properties and how we can protect the residents of the area. And that's what I would like to hear, rather than how the business operates, how much pay I don't ask McDonald's what they give, or CVS, or Walgreens, or anybody else. That's really not my job up here. My job really is to make sure that this city continues to be the excellent city, providing the excellent services in time to come. Thank you.
Mr. Moss.
Yes, I just wanted to make some additional comments with the high-profile vote that were taken about months and a half. This is, I think, the last televised meeting before that vote. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, there was an article, an editorial that ran in the Southfield Daily Excentric this past Sunday, and it was editorial about keeping the discussion on Walmart civil. And many of us on purpose did not attend the planning commission meeting. So we've been hearing tales of lore about the perception of high emotions that went on there, and we didn't experience them firsthand. But I do want to say that the decorum that was shown in our last study session meeting and the decorum that was shown tonight is truly appreciated. This is going to be a very difficult vote, we have a lot of pros and cons to weigh about it, and we've heard from people who supported it tonight, people who are against it. If we can keep that tone that we've experienced in this meeting going on the January 28, I think we'll have a meaningful discussion. It's easier to not only hear the residents, but it's easier to listen. So I just wanted to say, you know, there were some thoughtful points that were brought up in the communications portion, and whether you're for or against it here, and I truly appreciate that we're able to have a good tone and have a thoughtful exchange of things.
Anyone else?
This is our last televised meeting, I believe, for the end of the year, and I'd like to wish everyone, you know, Christmas, and holidays, and safe and enjoy your families and your friends. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes, I would also like to add on to what Ms. Jordan had just said about enjoying your holiday season, and this has been a tough year for everybody. I'm certainly glad that the elections are over, whether you supported the winning candidate or you supported the other candidate. We only have one president, and he's President of the United States and all of us, and it would be very helpful if we all pulled in the same direction to make the United States become successful. And I would say the same thing had the election gone the other way. We only have one president, and we don't need a divided country, and during the holiday season is a time to sit back and relax and enjoy the goodness of being here, a free America where we don't have to worry about when we go and when we celebrate our individual religions, we don't have to worry about someone breaking in and doing harm to us. As an example, this evening before our meeting, there was an event on our front lawn, the lighting of the menorah, which just goes to show you how much...
The mayor is out of town this evening, the administration, the attorney, the sheriff.
Yes, I have nothing to add at this point, other than to echo the best wishes for the holiday season, and thank you very much.
Next, we move on to the attorney, and we do have two items. Ms. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that we have before the council this evening is a request to extend the moratorium on medical marijuana facilities. The council in the past did issue this moratorium pending developments not only within the legislature, but also as different court decisions have kind of risen up through the courts. There are currently discussions within the legislature to make additional changes to this act, as well as the Michigan Supreme Court recently has been asked for leave to appeal in terms of an ordinance of the City of Wyoming, Michigan, that banned medical marijuana based on the Federal Controlled Substances Act. So it is the recommendation of the city planner and myself that we continue our moratorium pending additional insight and guidance from both the legislature and the judicial system.
We support, we have a motion by Ms. Jordan, and supported by Mr. Percotti. I would just add at this point that I think this is our third, will be our third extension on this moratorium. We were really hoping that the state legislature would have spent some time cleaning up what appears to be a very poorly written law, and that we would have a little more direction. So personally, I feel it's fitting to, while we're waiting to continue our moratorium. Any other comments on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I would just like to state that this is a 180 days moratorium. It's until July 9, 2015. That's correct.
Correct. Anyone else? Hearing that, we have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Ward.
President, the second item is a proposed amendment to Section 8.33 of Chapter 99 of the City Code. It is a discussion that both the building department and our department has had with council on at least two occasions, and this is a proposed ordinance that would now allow LED-operated gas station product price signs. We did review this matter and proposed language with the city council at the COW meeting last Monday, December 3rd, and it was the consensus of council that this be brought forward tonight for approval and introduction of the ordinance.
So moved.
Ms. Ward. Moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan. I would add that we've had numerous discussions on the sign ordinance as it relates to electronic messaging, poll drives. The council in the last year has given us quite a review, and we will be continuing in 2013 with other refinements to our city sign ordinance. However, with the onset of winter, we would like to afford the filling stations the opportunity to have electronic price signs. So we're going to move this piece of the ordinance tonight. Any other comments? If none, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. President.
Yes. Your number is 1600.
Sixteen hundred. Two sixty.
Sixteen hundred.
That's correct, 1600.
All right, and moved by Mr. Fraser. Support by Mr. Percotti, always in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Your number is 1600.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
That's correct, 1600.
All right, and moved by Mr. Fraser. Support by Mr. Percotti, always in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Your number is 1600.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
That's correct, 1600.
All right, and moved by Mr. Fraser. Support by Mr. Percotti, always in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before we leave this section of our agenda, there are a couple of things. One is, one of the speakers challenged us that we are in violation of our own rules by duplicating numbers, and I would like to ask our city clerk to research that and come back with an answer. Also, and I don't know if you need to work with the attorney or not, but I think it would be helpful for the council to know that how we're doing business.
I would like to get into research, and I will consult with the city attorney, and we will report that to council on the information. Thank you.
Okay, the second thing I'd like to ask is that over the year, we've had a number, not too many, but a number of lawsuits against the city, and it would be helpful for me, and I would hope that the rest of the council would feel that it would be important that we know the status of those lawsuits, and maybe a little summary of the lawsuits that we've been working on since the last report.
I can put a status summary together that would indicate, you know, how many are current and where they are in terms of the progress of that, so we can do that.
Yeah, that would be helpful for us to know how we're doing, our average.
Yes.
And that would include resolution, how they were resolved?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I don't, I'm presuming there's no objection, so you have your direction.
We don't object.
And Ms. Ward, you have your direction.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Percotti. Anything else? No, then okay. Next, we move on to clerk, treasurer, planner, professor, and engineer, and we'll start with the expense report of Nancy Banks.
Mr. President. I move to approve the expense report for Clerk Banks for the NLC Congress of Cities from 11/27 to 12/2.
It's been moved by Mr. Moss, or by Mr. Lance, to approve the expense report of Nancy Banks for the National League of Cities, always in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Madam Clerk, we have, as we were looking ahead to January, we have quite a bit of business to attend to, and we need, at our last meeting, we amended the time of the council meeting for January 14th to start at 5:30, and now, since last week, and trying to allow sufficient time for public input on the 28th of January, as well as three public hearings that are scheduled on other topics on January 14th, we'd like to move the council meeting to begin at 4:00 p.m. on the 14th.
Ms. Ward. So moved.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, always in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That meeting will not begin at 4:00 p.m.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1598, Defense Regulations.
Support. All right. It's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, to enact ordinance 1598. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1599, which is Section 10.1003, Chapter 26 of the Traffic Code.
Okay. Supported by, moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, to move ordinance 1599 on that section, always in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Once again.
I know you gave the person from the public the industry that I don't know that property is tiny, and that's crazy.
Mr. Chairman, I also have something I have to address to the city clerk. I'd like to keep this meeting, some orders so that I can give you that, without interruptions. And, Mr. Chairman, I would just like that, that I've heard that we, I like to turn these in at the end of the meetings, but we used to get a folder with a rubber band, and those items that we're taking with us, I'd like to, if you would get a folder up here with a rubber band, something to leave in the books.
Thank you.
That one, the books that we've used.
Thank you.
So also having holiday that we wanted for Merry Christmas doll.
And I would add my holiday greetings to everyone as well, and a happy 2013. This meeting is adjourned, and there is a toy drive being conducted by the Southfield Police Department on December 17th. If you'd like to bring a toy, bring it to the Southfield Police Department on that day.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.